I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to our Commissioner meeting this Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. Go ahead and ask for any public input on our agenda lineup today. Just the order if anything needs to be taken off. If not, I would consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second, Otten.
Got a motion and a second. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. And we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any public input on consent agenda?
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Otten, second.
Thank you. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. First item on our agenda is the first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, changing the zone or portion of a portion approximately 2.07 acres of the property described as lot four, quantity addition, south half, southeast quarter, section 31, township 100 north, range 50 west, Delapre Township, from the I-1 light industrial district to the A-1 agricultural district, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Location is at 27277 471st Avenue. All right, and then we'll have our second reading. I don't know when that's coming up. Second reading will be on the 27th. All right, thank you, Sheri. Next item on our agenda is consider a motion to terminate the ground lease agreement for unit R4 with Arlen Haug Trust and approve a new ground lease agreement with Vanguard Squadron, Inc. I don't know what...
Madam Chair, can we?
Let's move those. I know counsel...
Can we move those to the near the end?
Counsel are talking. So on items two and three, we're going to just skip over those for the time being until we can address them this morning. We'll move on to item four on our agenda. Sheri, good morning.
Good morning. Sheri Lynn, Lincoln County Auditor. I am requesting a over hire in my office. My payroll specialist will be retiring in September. I'd like to hire a new person to get trained in by June 29th, no later than July 13th.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Sheri? All right. Any public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve. Otten?
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, you have a motion to consider a motion to authorize the county auditor proceed with the requirements of SDCL 3112A and SDCL 616 regarding a petition that was submitted for the establishment of Meadow Ridge Road District.
Yep. I received the petition on April 29th. We did certify that there was a valid number of signatures. We just need to move forward now. This is basically a formality to authorize me to set the election and move forward with it. Once the election's done, if the voters say that they do want to establish it, we'll come back with an order establishing the road district.
Where is this one at?
If you look at... So it's 110 and Highway 11 over there underneath Nine Mile Creek. It would encompass those two roads that are in there, Prairie Lane and Ridgeway Road.
And Sheri, because this is the first time that I voted on this, what is this?
So alls we're doing is you're allowing me to move forward with the election, and I have to do the advertisement for the election. When the road district, once they have the election, I will come back with an order, and it basically, it will set them up to be able to be a taxing entity within Lincoln County.
Okay.
They will do the management and maintain the roads within that yellow highlighted area.
Okay. So does Lincoln County do anything, have any expense on this, if it passes?
No, no, because they do bring in a $120 check for the advertising for the election and some of the cost, but no, by statutory, we are required to set up the election for them.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sheri?
Yeah. I guess I was thinking maybe Betty was talking about, in the future, will Lincoln County have any cost in maintaining or anything?
No, these, once this is set up as a road district, the district will be allowed... Stop clicking the pen. The district will be allowed to tax to maintain the road, and if the road needs to be replaced, it will be the snow removal and everything else within that yellow district.
They do it all, then?
They'll do it all. Yep.
Okay. It's like a commie. You don't think she runs this outfit? Sheri, the only, how much, the only thing that, another thing is your time, that you have to compute for taxes and all the other stuff that you perform for these things, because we do have many road districts in our county.
Well, and technically, I don't compute the taxes. They send me a certification saying this is what we want to charge people. This is different than schools and cities and everything else. They just certify, we've got this list of people, we want to charge this much to them.
You can't click this one.
All right. Any other questions for our auditor?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second.
There we go. It's good to go.
But I haven't taken any public input on it yet.
Oh, excuse me. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Has there any public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, I've already got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. Can we circle back to items three and four on our agenda? The first one was regarding the ground lease for unit R2. Or, excuse me, R4 and R2 are what we're talking about, on two and three.
Morning, Commissioner. Drew DeGroot from the State's Attorney's Office. Before you will do item, what's been previously marked as item number two. It's our standard procedure when the hangers are transferred out at the airport to terminate the ground lease with the one party and then enter into a new lease with the new owners of the hangers. I did speak to Mr. Stewart, counsel for the purchasers, and I will have an update on the lease, new lease agreement. If you look at provision number six in the lease agreement, it'll give the county an option to update the, or adjust, the ground lease rate within 90 days of board action here today. So that gives us the availability to increase the rental rates as the commission is aware and the general public is aware. We did hire AMCG as a consultant, and they came back with a rental rate study that came, and that had new market rates for our ground leases out at the airport. The commission is contemplating those market rates and expect those market rates to be adjusted on all leases that are out at the airport here in the near future. So this would allow the commission to have the flexibility to adjust those rental rates. Any questions?
Question then, if we adjust it and then they're not okay with the rate, whatever it is, then do they, they'll have an, can we, will we put language in there that they'll have an out?
Yeah, we can certainly put that in there. Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Are you talking the out being like 90 days that terminates that?
Well, something so they can get out if we're, you know, if it's too high for them or they don't want to pay.
Yeah, we can have a termination clause in there as well. Yes.
Is there, I got a question here. Are we putting the cart before the horse here a little bit? Why don't we just look at the study first and then run that past these people and then cut a deal with them?
Dave, do you want to address that?
I appreciate that question. The situation that we're in, the current owners of this hangar and then the agenda item that's coming up next, the second hangar, they've been longtime tenants out at the airport. I'm in the process where we've already done closing statements. They've moved out of their hangar. They're ready for the new owners to come in. And as Drew mentioned, the normal procedure has been to come in front of this board, terminate the obligations that the existing owner has to Lincoln County under the lease, and then your State's Attorney's Office drafts a new lease. What Mr. DeGroot was talking about is modifying the language a little bit so that as you guys are studying the rates, that's coming from that marketing and the plan that you guys had go through, we'll have that ability to adjust and have those new rates on the lease. Speaking a little bit more generally, from being out at the airport, everybody is expecting, and they know that the lease rates have been at a point where they've been too low. They haven't been adjusted in the past as consistently as they could have been. So people are expecting that there's going to be some type of increase. This isn't a shock. I don't think, you know, the types of increases, we don't know where those are, but I don't think it's going to be the deal breaker where somebody says, I want completely out of my lease and I'm going to move my airplane and go. Everybody's pretty happy where they are. It's just a matter of getting your lease rates up to market. So for me and the clients that are involved, it would be a setback of the real estate transactions that they're already moving through. And I think with the change of the language, we can address the county's concern.
Any other questions for Dave?
Commissioner Aaron's, I think that we'll have lots of discussion coming up on the airport, especially on rental rates, but on several other things that are going to affect the future of our airport. So what we're trying to do today is just get two transactions taken care of so that people are to sell and to purchase and move on in so many ways.
Correct. Yep. And that would be greatly appreciated by both parties.
In light of the fact that you understand we're going to raise the rates, that's comforting to me. So you need more input.
Yeah, I'll ask for it in a second. Anybody have any other questions?
Nope.
All right. Any public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, then can I get a motion to terminate the ground lease and approve a new ground lease agreement with the, not as currently written, but...
Madam Chair, I would move for that with the understanding that at some, that within 90 days, that the rental rate will change.
All right. With that, I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Otten, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion amongst the commissioners? If not, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is just a different unit, but same situation.
Morning again, Commissioner. Drew DeGroot from the State's Attorney's Office. Again, this is what we've done in the past, standard course of procedure is termination of the ground lease to transfer that interest to the new owners of the Top Gun Investments.
All right. Anybody have questions for Drew?
I'm good to go.
All right. Anybody else? Any public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, can I get a motion, please?
Give you a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? All right.
Can we put it in the motion to clarify the name?
Yeah, that motion includes that there's going to be a rent.
The whole thing, yeah. Same as the first.
So it's a motion to terminate the ground lease for unit R2 with Vanguard and approve the new ground lease with Top Gun. Not the same language that's in the current contracts, but we're going to amend it to, that will be increasing the rate within 90 days and then to give them an out clause. Is that your motion, Commissioner Putnam?
Yes, it is. That's a good one.
Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. Now we're skipping.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
There you go, Dave. Thank you.
Now we'll skip on to our presentation from Southeastern Behavioral Health.
Hello, Paul Anderson, Commission Admin Assistant. Just introducing Southeastern Behavioral Health. They're here to do their presentation on their 2026 budget requests and summation of their 24 and 25 activities. And then you'll see in the facts and vetting that there is an SDCL related to South Dakota College of Fed law, related to funding for Southeastern Behavioral Health. Counties may fund these centers for up to a dollar per capita, per resident, and then that relates to offsetting of charges later on down the road. And with that, here's Tiffany from Southeastern Behavioral.
Thanks, Paul. I do have a hand, I'll have Hannah hand that out. Again, thank you. My name is Tiffany Wolfing. I'm the CEO of Southeastern Behavioral Health. We are the accredited community mental health center that's assigned to serve Lincoln County. Before I forget, I do want to introduce a couple of the team members I brought with me. Hannah McManus is our Director of IT Compliance and Outcomes, so she holds us accountable and also helps put together the outcomes that you see in front of you. And then I did bring our Director of Finance, Kelly Smith, who again, holds us accountable to the dollars that we have supporting our mission. As Paul had indicated, we're here today to make that annual request that we submit based on the statute, and I really appreciate you having that ready and pulled up, because I brought a copy just in case. But right now, based on the 2020 census, our request is for $65,161. Those dollars really help support the services that we deliver through our Community Mental Health Center system. What Hannah handed out was some information on the back page, goes over the services that we provide on the front page, some impact statements, and I'll talk about those a little bit more. But I think what's really important to understand is how we impact Lincoln County specifically. One of the services that we're very proud of is the work we do with our children who are experiencing a serious emotional disturbance, as well as their families. In Lincoln County specifically, we're able to be part of the school's service delivery system when requested to provide counseling services to those youth and families in their schools. Right now, we're currently actively involved in 15 different schools within Lincoln County, and like I said, able to be in any of the schools upon request, and we really value that partnership that we have with the schools to serve those kids who may have behavioral health needs. Some of the other programs that we support are our Adult Services Program, so individuals with serious mental illness who have significant impairments because of that mental illness. We provide case management. We are able to support their psychiatric needs through medication management, really helping them remain safely in their homes and in their communities and working through those mental illness challenges that they may face. As you saw in our application, some of the things that we shared with you is the number of contacts that we've had with clients that come from Lincoln County, right around that 13,000 in 2024. Roughly 7,887 hours were spent serving the community members in Lincoln County, and just over 700 individuals were impacted. I think what's important, too, is understanding the impact that mental health care can have on individuals, and when people seek treatment, it does work. We see improved outcomes for individuals with mental illness. On your flyer that we handed out for individuals that engage in our care, we see a 67% reduction in emergency department visits. I think that's meaningful at the county level, because I think at times you guys sometimes have to pay some of those fees for the indigent population that may access the emergency room. So we work to ensure that they are stabilized and not needing to access emergency service department visits to support their mental health. We see a 98% reduction in the decrease of nights spent in a correctional facility. And what we do with individuals is we do a outcome tool when they start services with us, and then we do that same outcome tool with them every six months, and that's where we get this data from, measuring those kind of things. The other thing that we take pride in is individuals that engage in services with us. We ask them how they feel about us, and four out of five feel very comfortable with our services. Client satisfaction, and that's important, because we want them to be comfortable coming to us. We want them to feel safe when they come seeking the help that they need. The other number that we have on your sheet, there is a 48% decrease in attempts to die by suicide, so we are saving lives with our treatment and our care. And then an 89% decrease in mental health hospital admissions. So again, we're very proud of those outcomes. We continue to monitor them and look at how we can continue to improve them. I joined this team in December, so I'm still relatively new in the role, so very proud of the work that we do. On the backside of the flyer that you have, it does go through the different things that we do. For adults, a lot of case management in our Community Support Service Program. We help folks with job coaching, medication management, therapeutic education, support groups, assistance to connecting with other community resources, psychiatry, and integration through our clubhouse. I know, Commissioner Aaron's, you had an opportunity to visit us at our Cliff Avenue location, which is a temporary, hopefully, we're hoping is a temporary location. But out of that program, we offer what's called a clubhouse program where individuals can come, spend the day with us, and experience socialization and go on activities in our community under support of our staff, giving individuals with serious mental illness a mechanism to interact and engage in community support, and we're proud of that program as well. With that, I'll pause and answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Tiffany, have you noticed any trends lately? I mean, I mean, you know, we worried about drug addiction and things such as that, but have you seen any trends where we're up, down, sideways, or...
That's a really good question. Prior to this role, I spent 28 years with the state, working at the state level, looking at state trends and kind of the things that we're seeing. And I know we're going to hear from Thomas Otten here in a bit about the link. I think that South Dakota at times can be insulated from what we're seeing on each of the coasts, what's happening on the coast, but we eventually do get impacted. And opioids obviously has been the topic of conversation. I would say, though, in South Dakota, methamphetamine continues to be a significant concern, especially the impact, and I know Thomas may talk about this a little bit. When you see those individuals that are using methamphetamine and what that drug can be laced with on top of it to cause some serious psychosis, some serious aggression, some serious behaviors that are really challenging to treat. I don't know if I want to say that's a, I think it is a trend that we are seeing, especially in a certain space where individuals are active users.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? All right. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, and I just want to end it with, we really truly appreciate the dollars that your county continues to support us with. They go to good use. You can, your return on investment is definitely worth what you're putting in here, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Impressive statistics.
Thank you.
All right. Any public input on that agenda item? All right. If not, then we'll have another presentation from Lifescape.
Hello, Paul Anderson again. Introducing Lifescape. Again, going over their 24 and 25 activities, some of their services, and then their 20, 26 requests is in there at $55,000. And then I will just do this. And there you go, Justin.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to update you on our activities. Lifescape is a big overview. Lincoln County helps us with our adult services portion. We did see increased growth in every service line this year and have several wait lists, including in adult services. Lifescape has 39 adult residential homes. I'll touch a little more on that. Last year, we opened a new one in Harrisburg, eight-person group home. These homes are about 1.2 to 1.6 million dollar homes, really built to meet the needs of those individuals supported. We have, 85% are Level 1 or Level 2 support, which are the higher levels of support. Our goal really is that people will be able to live in the community and be supported in a typical environment. We have 440 adults that are currently supported by Lifescape. We are a community support provider, one of, there are 19 in the state. And then we have 256 adults that are supported in day services. They either live in some of our group homes, or they live with their families and just come in for recreation, job support. We have 45 individuals who are supported through our employment out in the community, so we are grateful for those employers willing to have some really awesome employees in their ranks there, and over 500 adults, if you take all of those programs in as one. Adults, children, we've got our 18-bed specialty hospital, a 60-bed intermediate care facility. This is a residential facility for children, primarily challenging behaviors, mostly on the autism spectrum, others with some complex medical needs that can't be met at home or at their school. And we have 134 children in our specialty school. So some of those children live at home and just come in for day school in about a 40-mile, 45-mile radius of Sioux Falls. We have three outpatient centers, two in Sioux Falls and one in Rapid City. We offer occupational, speech, and physical therapy, seating and mobility. We have our Autism Child Development Center that primarily helps children with that applied behavior analysis, intensive therapies. And then we do outreach to 61 school districts in the state, and that accounts for almost 5,000 children across our state. And we are, we have oversight by Department of Health, Department of Human Services, Department of Social Services, and the Department of Education. We do have a custom, orthotics, prosthetics, and mobility, so we do support some children and several adults with prosthetics and wheelchair assistive tech and other equipment that they may need to be more independent. Our budget-wise, we have a $94 million budget as an organization. We are primarily funded through Medicaid, so 82%. We have 4% private pay and 14% commercial insurance. The private pay and commercial insurance is primarily in our outreach programs. Most all of our residential and school services and most of the hospital are paid by Medicaid. So when you hear in our current environment of Medicaid cuts, that's what we're preparing for. We expect that in South Dakota, our reimbursement rate comes through the South Dakota Legislature predominantly. We are expecting a 3% to 6% cut in those rates, just from the state level. And then also, we, since we are a specialty hospital, we are expecting a $2 million cut in the provider tax. So when you hear of that in the news, we think mostly our big hospital systems, but with Lifescape being an 18-bed pediatric hospital, we also will experience those and expect that one to be complete. The other may be negotiable. I'm not sure how that one will turn out. The Lifescape Foundation, which I'm the president of the foundation, we help support food and rent assistance for adults. We do specialized therapy equipment, make sure that individuals have opportunities to get on the community. This involves baseball games and Wild Water West, all kinds of activities. We helped purchase land for adult residential home construction and provide a lot of the funding match for those. I'll talk a little bit about that here coming up. And then we help with staff recruitment, retention, and training. And then I'll have an update on our children's campus, which I let you know about last year as well. We have talked about wait lists. We have over 450 children on waitlist for autism services. The rate of autism has gone up from one in 31 children who will be diagnosed with disorder on the autism spectrum, so we only expect that number to continue rising. And with children with autism best getting help when they're very young, will help them be very independent adults as they get older. We currently have 13 adults on our waitlist for residential services, which puts the new homes that we're building even more important as well. You can see regionally, a wide reach in outreach and some residential. And then we serve children, mostly children, in every county in South Dakota. Adults are mostly Minnehaw and Lincoln County. We have, we employ four out of the five seating specialists. We have our only speech-language pathologist in swallowing disorders. We have an intensive therapy clinic for children with swallowing and eating disorders. And we have the only early start Denver model for treated toddlers with autism as well. And if a child is in an accident, has a traumatic brain injury, we have six certified brain injury specialists, which is not widely known in our area. Children would be typically sent to Denver or Omaha for that specialty, but we're able to support them right here in our community. The, our commitment to adults, we believe our... Our commitment to adults, we believe everyone should have a place that they're proud of to live in. We were on a commitment to build five new homes in five years. You can see we started in twenty-twenty-one. We just opened our sixth home, actually, in twenty, this last March. We do have one in Harrisburg. These homes are built much like a twin home and just have great accommodations for individuals with varying needs. Most of the funding comes through the South Dakota Housing Development Authority through a grant, and then we have our owner equity portion and provide the land for those. Our children's campus, we broke ground last April. You can see our current facility, we broke ground in nineteen-forty-eight, so our facility's getting very old and very tired. Excited to have a new campus. It's up on Career Avenue, and Thirty-Fourth is the location up just north of southeast Tech. The Phase One, we've got complete funding for Phase One. It's a hundred-and-seven-point-six-million-dollar facility. We have a hundred-and-two raised so far. We're working on Phase Two. It will have increased availability for children's residential. The courtyards and playgrounds are all enclosed within buildings, so there are no fences, and the children are safe to play and run off energy in those spaces. The specialty school has been built with a twenty-five percent growth capacity, and we have our eighteen-bed specialty hospital, as well as intensive outpatient therapy, inpatient therapy, and then some of our administration and training will also be in this facility. This is another angle of it. The residential is on the left, and then the main core is on the right. Yep, some more pictures of that. The backside, we will be adding a second phase that will be more of a recreation space that has a recreational pool, a therapy pool. It'll be the only pediatric therapy pool in the region that is not used for athletics. This is for rehab for children. The buoyancy that we can change the temperature and the resistance within the pool that really helps those children gain more mobility. It will also have a gymnasium and a clinic room. We are partnering with Sanford Health for some virtual care, which will help decrease trips to the hospital, to clinics. They'll be able to see children quicker through that virtual clinic as well. And then an additional courtyard play area and a staff respite area as well. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your funding and support.
Is there any public input on this agenda item? All right. We'll move on to the next one. We've got a presentation.
One comment. Having gone through Lifescape, I think that has to be a calling. The individuals that you work with and the patience that you have to have, I think everybody should go through there, and they would learn to appreciate their own life, but they would appreciate the caregivers. I commend you for all of those individuals.
You're all invited.
Tremendous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
Paul Anderson, again, with the last briefing from the link. The twenty-twenty-six request is thirty thousand dollars. In previous years, we have used opioid funding, the national opioid settlement dollars, to offset some of this funding in the past, and then we'll have to decide going forward. But that is how we've used some of that money in the past. And with that, Mr. Otten from the link.
Oh, yep, presentation. Yep, that's right. Carter's doing it, too. There you go. And then click.
Very good. I'll try to run through, I have maybe twenty slides here, so I'm going to run through them really quick. If anybody wants to stop me at any point, you certainly can. This was the four entities that got together and each gave four-hundred thousand dollars annually to kind of create the base of the budget. It's about a two-point-two-million-dollar budget. We get one-point-six from, you know, these four entities. You can see kind of, the mission is to empower individuals to seek care. So really, it is about mental health and addiction services, but I'd say it's very heavily weighted towards the addiction services that we'll see, and I'll show you the three different programs that we have, really around the values of compassion, respect, and safety. We really believe that people deserve respect for who are struggling with this disease, and it is not a character flaw. Services, the three, four programs that we have, the first one, acute intoxication, is the sobering center. So we have thirteen beds. There's a male area and a female area. This would be patients that are generally going to be with us probably between six and twelve hours. They're intoxicated and in a bad spot, might be on a park bench in the middle of the winter, might be walking through the city. They will be brought in most of the time by law enforcement. They're on what we call protective custody hold. They're free to go once they can walk and talk. In general, we'll try to move people from our sobering center into the withdrawal management program if they're willing, but some patients are not at the point where they want to get well yet from their addiction. And so we do, while we're providing a safe place for them, we're not providing medical care for them, and so it's important, once they can walk and talk, they're free to go. Obviously, a BAL of zero for one of these patients would be the most dangerous thing we could do if we're not providing medical treatment. So if we can convince them to come into the withdrawal management, that would be where we do, we would medically manage that withdrawal process over the course of three, four, or five days. They will be with us, depending on the substance that they're using or substances, and that program then would prepare them for kind of that next level. The hope would be that from there, we would get them into, you know, an inpatient facility, whether that be Keystone or Verus inpatient facility, or it could potentially be an intensive outpatient program. But whatever that next level of care for them is, it'll be based on kind of their assessment of what's happening. The third program there is a mental health crisis program, so we have crisis stabilization for patients who have a mental health issue that maybe need something more than, you know, see your counselor next week, but less than an inpatient care. So they don't need inpatient services. They're really designed as kind of twenty-three-hour observation. They're over-engineered lazy boy chairs is what I would equate them to. And the last, we do post-sexual assault care there in collaboration with the Compass Center, who comes in and does a lot of that work. This would be the different individuals that work there. We have a nurse practitioner seven days a week that would be there, nurses and LPNs, paramedics, technicians, behavioral health technicians, would be people with a four-year degree in psychology or social work or those kind of fields. We'll have a chemical dependency counselor that comes from, in partnership with Southeastern Behavioral Health, and we have peer sports specialist and social worker. Over the course of the last year, one of the things we've done that's been really exciting for us is a closer partnership with Southeastern Behavioral Health. So they have about a dozen or so staff that are at the link at this location. They work upstairs. They also provide, as I mentioned earlier, kind of that CD evaluations. They provide groups to the patients that are there, and they really do a very important component of that linking. You know, when we talk about the link, our goal is to link them to that next level of care. Southeastern, obviously, very invested and knows the resources well, so can kind of connect them to whatever services those they might need, whether they be mental health, addiction, or whatever else. So a very significant development over the course of the last nine months or so, it's been a great strengthening of the relationship. These are the services that we talked a little bit about. They also will help us in getting patients enrolled for Medicaid, those patients that might fit that. So since we started, June of twenty-one was the beginning of the link, thirteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighteen triages, so that'd be thirteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighteen times someone came in who needed some level of care. It could be any of those different levels of care. That would be outlined, three-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-six of those were the medically managed detox. That would be the highest level of care that we provide there. Jail populations, this is an interesting graph. If you look across the top of the years, so twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-four, if you look over at the left-hand side, you can kind of see the years as they go. We opened in that seventeen there where it's highlighted. That's when the link opened in June. So this is patients that were in the jail population for involuntary commitment alcohol, drug, emergency five-day holds. Generally, a population that we would say doesn't belong in jail, I won't say. Obviously, there are a few that even after the link opens do need to be in jail because there are extreme violence or there's other issues. But it has been an incredible decline from, you know, in the hundreds, and now if you look at the last eight months or so, it's in single digits most every one of those months, with the exception of July had ten. So very significant change in the jail population. Who do we see? Native American, fifty-six percent, and you can see the rest of that breakdown, white. Caucasian would be thirty-four percent, and then smaller percentages for African-American, Hispanic, and other. In the general population, as far as ages, we, it's eighteen and above, so obviously it'd be a very small group from zero to nineteen. The big groups are between thirty and sixty would be the populations that we'd see a lot of patients in. So this is a self-report. Every triage that we do, we ask where would they go if the link didn't exist, and the three big ones, nowhere, is about half of the patients would go nowhere and before these services existed. That would be very accurate. A third or so would have gone to jail, and you saw the jail number decrease represents that. About ten percent would have went to emergency rooms, then a couple of other spots where patients reported they would have went had they not had the link services available to them. How do patients arrive? This just gives you another kind of line of sight of, you know, how do patients come or why do they come? Law enforcement, as I mentioned, is about half of them. A lot of those will be the sobering center protective custody patients. Hospital security, so between the two hospitals, they will send from their emergency room to the link if they do show up at the emergency room, and that's about twenty-one percent of the cases we have. Twenty-two percent of the cases are walk-ins and then a variety of others. We do have a relationship where EMS can bring them here instead of the hospitals through a waiver program, but that happens a relatively small number of times. And you can see about sixty-seven percent of the population at the link is unhoused. Bigger percentage than that would even, yep, would have, it's a very small percentage that would have any kind of third-party payer. Now, if there is a third-party payer, we will bill the insurance, and that makes up about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars over the course of a year. You mentioned, as I mentioned at the beginning, we have about a six-hundred-thousand delta. Close to half of that gets made up with the billing of insurances. But even when we do bill insurance, there is no copay, no, the patient will never pay a penny for anything they receive at the link, which we think is a really important component. This is just how to refer someone to the link, and so that brings us to the final slide of the ask today. We did look at kind of, in Lincoln County, we had forty-eight individuals who came for that highest level of care of withdrawal management. That stayed, an average length of stay about four days, so you're talking about two-hundred days roughly that they, that would have been Lincoln County patients. We'd also have roughly two-hundred patients that would have come to our sobering center from Lincoln County somewhere in that ballpark. We typically have about four times as many as we do in the withdrawal management. The ask, as you can see, thirty thousand from Lincoln County to help support these services, as was mentioned earlier by Paul. A lot of counties are using the opioid dollars because the link is a great program that really helps with that program, whereas there's not always a lot of other alternatives. Happy to take any questions if they exist.
Thank you. Anybody have questions?
Thanks for the presentation today. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I think the numbers are sobering, pardon, and concerning. And one of the things I'm looking at, obviously, is people are saying to themselves right now, well, worried about the sustainability of all these programs, and how are we going to do this? Counties operate off property taxes only, no sales tax, all that, so we've got a limited number of dollars, and clearly the need exceeds the resources. I'm kind of looking at all these programs, and I'm saying to myself, well, geez, isn't there the possibility of taking advantage of economies of scale somehow? And so, or potential overlap or synergies? I mean, have there been any discussions with any of these organizations to see if you could, I don't know, merge with them, but do any further integration in order to avoid potential overlap and take advantage of?
Yeah. Good question. So yeah, I would say there's definitely conversations around that. The sustainability of the Lincoln specifically is something we are very actively working on as a board, right? The board is actively working on that right now, because just as you pointed out, you know, this is, you know, there is a delta there that needs to be worked out. The long-term conversation, there's been a lot of conversation around Southeastern and Navara and what that looks like at the link, and five years from now, is there a different arrangement? Does that look like, you know, that Southeastern maybe takes a larger role and maybe does some other components of this, again, through trying to create maybe more efficiencies in having one agency do it instead of two agencies? Right now, I think it's in a perfect place. You know, that withdrawal management program, I say this often, I also oversee the Behavioral Health Hospital in Sioux Falls, hundred-and-sixty beds there. We have, you know, twenty-three beds here. This, the link probably is, you know, a very small percentage of our beds, maybe fifteen percent of our beds, but it's probably fifty percent of my stress. This is a very complex program to run. It's very, very complicated. As Tiffany alluded to earlier, the patients coming in on meth, very, very common that they'll be violent. It's very lightly staffed. I mean, the reason we can do two-point-two million, almost all of that is staff, but it usually has two or three staff there at any given time. So it's a very complex thing to run, and we do it, I would say, very economically. So we are looking at, you know, I think one of the things, I think the four entities need to have a bigger stake in the game, and I understand, I work for one of those entities, I'd say that same thing if my boss was here. I've said it many times. It needs to be, you know, four-hundred thousand that was given in twenty-twenty-one should have, you know, inflation increase every single year, because we have to pay the employees more than we paid them last year. So there's some discussions around some of those pieces, and there's probably always going to be a need for some philanthropy pieces to make up that difference. That's, you know, right now what we're trying to accomplish.
Just one other comment, I guess, maybe not necessarily a question, but, you know, when this program first started, there was a lot of general discussion of people saying, well, you know, the hospitals are getting involved, Minnehaha County's getting involved because it'll keep people out of the emergency room, and so maybe it was viewed as somewhat of an insurance policy at the time to try to reduce those emergency room encounters. But I'm looking at your slide up there, and the statistic that, one of several that popped out to me is that most of them are being diverted from going to jail.
Yeah, there's a huge difference in the jail population than what there used to be, and the hospitals are experiencing less. I mean, I think it, just as we said, ten percent of the patients that used to say they would walk into the ER are now walking into the link, so I think there is benefit for both hospitals. There's a hot debate between the two hospitals of, is this, you know, worth the investment that we're making or not? But I would make a very, I think you could make a very good business case that this is a very good investment for the hospitals. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have questions?
You say, at the beginning there, you had a link with four, the two hospitals and a couple other places.
City and the county, Sioux Falls, city and county.
And the county.
Of Minnehaha.
Okay. The, I guess it's kind of confusing to me is how do they figure which way they go with each patient, you know? Is there a kind of a setup by design for, you know, to know which patient would go where?
You mean between the two hospitals or?
And you and?
Yeah, so I would say from addiction patients would generally, law enforcement's kind of algorithm, if you will, if they have someone who is intoxicated and they're going to bring them to the link. Again, the sobering center is probably the best starting point for them, where they can at least sober up, and then we're going to determine whether they want to get well. And it is, you know, I don't say that facetiously. There are some patients who just aren't at that point where they want to get well yet, and that's okay. We've had patients come as many as one-hundred-and-fourteen times before they decided they wanted to get well, but when they do want to get well, it's a life-changing event. And that one-hundred-and-fourteenth patient, I don't know, you may have heard, because I And that 114th patient, I don't know, you may have heard, because I know the mayor put it out on Facebook, but like literally is now employed, is, has an apartment, you know, is, changes his life. So addiction is largely what we do at the link. If there's a behavioral health or if there's a suicidal concern, they're typically gonna go to the behavioral health hospital. The link's not designed in a ligature-free manner where, you know, the behavioral hospital would be a much better fit for a patient who's suicidal. There's definitely some overlap of patients that, you know, that crisis stabilization, some of those patients might be at the link and some might be at behavioral health. Most law enforcement would bring them to behavioral health, but if they walk in at the link, we're kind of a no wrong door, we're gonna treat you wherever you're at.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Any public input on that agenda item? All right, then we'll move on to our opportunity for public comment for items not on our agenda. Anybody wanting to address the board on services or policies, you're free to come up now and do that. All right, if there's nobody, then we'll move on to commissioner reports. Any commissioners have reports this morning they'd like to make?
Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
I want to recognize our HR Director, Carrie, for putting on that Women at Workforce last week. There were four sessions, and the last one, I think, well, I think she has them all linked in for people to look at, but it was by a keynote speaker. The number four was Mel Robbins, and I, I just, I cannot say enough that if you haven't seen it, you need to go look at it, because it was very powerful. And so, thank you for bringing education forward again.
Thanks, Carrie. Any other commissioner reports this morning? All right, if not, Drew, do we need an executive session? All right, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Alicia, we call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry, which legal counsel, SDCL 125-2 sub 3, is that your motion?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Erns?
Second.
Thank you. All right, Alicia, we call the roll?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Have executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second it, we're done.
Alicia, will you call the roll?
Yes.
Otten? Yes. Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
What are we gonna do now?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.